abstain.
Johnny Alzivar.
Yes.
Emily Webb.
Yes.
Jan Fried.
Yes.
Kayla Burke.
Yes.
Lisa Howard.
Yes.
Steve Wallace.
Yes.
Carolyn Genison.
Yes.
Francis Bogus.
Yes.
Greg Watier.
Yes.
Abby Chungus.
Yes.
And Greg Jones.
Abstain.
Abstain. Motion carries ten zero two.
Thanks Tyler. We have two consent items this evening. I'll read them both. The city, number one, item number one, the city initiated request for vacation of the north-south alley and east-west alley in the block bounded by Broad Street, Virginia Avenue, southwest Seventh Street and southwest Ninth Street in the vicinity of property located at eight oh nine Virginia Avenue. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to pull this item or you want to hear this item? You are here tonight for this item, to hear it.
This is Eric Lundie. If you're wanting to raise your hand to speak to one of these items, please press pound or star nine, star nine.
Okay. Is there anyone on the commission who would like to hear this item? Okay. Item number two, city initiated, initiated request for vacation of the east-west alley between east Sheridan Avenue and Arthur Avenue from First Street to Oxford Street in the vicinity of one thirteen east Sheridan Avenue. Is there anyone in the, anyone online who wishes to hear this item? Please raise your hand. Raise your hand or, you know, star.
Star nine.
Yeah, star nine.
I see a hand up. Kyle Casey.
Okay. Alright. Um, is there anyone, well, okay, so we're gonna hear this item. Okay. Um. Alright, so we will pull item two and move that to public hearing items. Um.
Chair.
Yes.
This is Jason Van Ness and his staff. I believe that's one of the, is that one of the applicants for a different item? I wonder if he was just confused as to, had a question about process. We might wanna confirm that that person wants to hear item, that item.
Okay. Um, so Kyle Casey, did you wanna speak to item number two? Can you raise your hand and Will?
Press star nine.
Yeah, star nine.
I believe almost everybody's on phone, so. The, the answer is yes.
So that individual's been allowed to speak and is unmuted.
I apologize. Yeah, we, we were having some link, some issues with the link trying to get in. It was complete, complete mistake.
Okay, so Mr. Casey, you don't wanna hear item number two?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone on the commission who would like to hear item number two? Okay. Um, alright. Is there any, are there any items that could be moved, moved to consent? Any other items, Eric?
Yes, Madam Chair, Eric Lundie. The item number five, we've been in contact with the consultants for the Paws and Pints item, and they are in agreement with staff recommendation, which is to comply with all the administrative review comments. And are open to having their item be placed on consent if there's no commissioner or opposition.
Okay, should I read it? Is there any, is, is there anyone online who would like to hear this item, number five? Item number five, request from Paws and, and Pints, represented by Kyle Casey. Okay. Anyone in the audience who wants to hear this item? Is there anyone on the commission who would like to hear this item? Okay, do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, this is Will Page. I move to take item number five and move it to the consent agenda tonight.
Perfect, thank you. So, we're gonna vote on moving number five to consent. Tyler, rule call.
Johnny Alzivar.
Yes.
Emily Webb.
Yes.
Jan Fried.
Yes.
Kayla Burke.
Yes.
Lisa Howard.
Yes.
Steve Wallace.
Yes.
Carolyn Genison.
Yes.
Francis Bogus.
Yes.
Greg Watier.
I need to recuse on this item. Thank you.
Greg Jones.
Yes.
Abby Chungus.
Yes.
Rocky Esposito.
Yes.
And Will Page.
Yes.
Motion carries twelve zero one.
Thank you. And I would like a motion now. We need a motion on the consent items. So we have item number one, item number two, and item number five. Do I have a motion or?
Jan, sorry. This is Abby. I'll make a motion to move for consent for items one, two, and five.
Okay, thanks Abby. Tyler?
Abby Chungus.
Yes.
Rocky Esposito.
Yes.
Will Page.
Yes.
Johnny Alzivar.
Yes.
Emily Webb.
Yes.
Jan Fried.
Yes.
Kayla Burke.
Yes.
Lisa Howard.
Yes.
Steve Wallace.
Yes.
Carolyn Genison.
Yes.
Francis Bogus. Francis? Greg Watier.
I need to abstain on number five, but yes, I wanted to.
And Greg Jones.
Yes.
Francis, are you with us?
Yes, I am. Your connection went out for a minute or two.
Sorry.
Yeah, motion carries twelve zero one for item five and thirteen zero for items one and two.
Okay, thank you. So now we're ready for the public hearing. And it's my understanding that number three, item number three has requested to be continued.
Yes, Madam Chair, this is Eric Lundie. Item three has asked for a continuance to the next meeting on September seventeenth in order to properly get their neighborhood outreach accomplished. And so staff's in agreement with that.
Okay. Um, remind me, do we need a motion on continue, to continue? I think we do.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Do I have a motion, please?
This is Emily Webb. I'll make a motion.
Thanks Emily. We have a motion. Tyler?
Uh, Rocky Esposito.
Yes.
Will Page.
Yes.
Johnny Alzivar.
Yes.
Emily Webb.
Yes.
Jan Fried.
Yes.
Kayla Burke.
Yes.
Lisa Howard.
Yes.
Steve Wallace.
Yes.
Carolyn Genison.
Yes.
Francis Bogus.
Yes.
Greg Watier.
Yes.
Greg Jones.
Yes.
And Abby Chungus.
Yes.
Motion carries thirteen zero.
Thank you. That leaves us with item number five.
Madam Chair, item number four would be.
Five, sorry. Four, request from Brown Dog Realty, represented by David Cranes to rezone property at twenty-one-ten Wakanda View Drive. Jason?
Here, members of the commission, Jason Van Ness and with the city planning staff. We, everybody can see the aerial identifying the subject property on the south side of Wakanda View Drive to the west of Flure Drive. Photograph of the property looking south and east towards it. More of a straight shot down the west, yeah, west perimeter of the property looking south. And then the, would be the, kind of the northeast corner of the property looking south and west. The applicant has a existing plumbing and mechanical shop business, is wanting to do some site improvements in order to be able to incorporate outdoor storage. They are seeking an I-one zoning. I'll get into the zoning and land use plan amendments a little bit further, but first I did wanna show you this site concept that's been provided by the applicant. We are not at a site plan review stage, but through the zoning process, we usually ask for some sort of concept to show the applicant's intentions. You can see the footprints of the sub, of the existing building, showing kind of a landscape perimeter around the outside area, the kind of a paved parking. And then there's a note, I can zoom in if, if need be, but identifies this area as being outdoor storage. In the staff report, we noted there's, you know, some history, some, some of the, of you that were on the commission and early 2019 might recall this coming forward for rezoning. You can see the staff report that the council rezoned the property in March of 2019 from R one eighty to C two, subject to conditions. So this was, this process started prior to the current or new zoning ordinance and design standards being in place. There were four conditions that were placed, whoops, excuse me, upon the property as part of that zoning condition. The applicant had also submitted a site plan prior to that rezoning process. That, and that site plan was not followed up upon, and so that application expired. And then in July of 2019, a zoning violation was sent for illegal expansion of gravel and outdoor storage material. And then there's just been some communication with the applicant. They had a pre-application meeting in July this year to get them up to speed on the new, new standards, and then so they've come in with a rezoning request and then understand that they would have a site plan to follow that. The existing future land use map, and I think maybe what I'll do, I'm gonna flip to photograph, here we go. This is a zoomed out map of the, of the larger area. You can see the subject property is in the middle of the map, highlighted in black. This is showing the different, this is the future land use map, showing the different designations. You can see the property currently is designated as community mixed use, this red color. Some of the other future land use map designations that you find in the area are low-density residential, medium-density residential, some public, semi-public, park open space. Can I get a flavor for the, the area? So the proposal to rezone it to I-one would require the map that you're looking at to be amended for the subject property to be designated as a general industrial. This isn't necessary for it to have just a standard I-one zoning. When we looked, and we prepared the staff report, we also looked at existing zoning in the area, using that as a guide to think through what might be appropriate. You can see that we have a mix of MX-two and then MX-three to the north, CX, and then some of our end districts around it. We'll go ahead and jump back to the staff recommendation in the staff report. So, uh, we are not supportive of amending the future land use map. We believe the community mixed use designation is what makes sense here, so we are recommending denial of that part of the application, along with denial of rezoning the property to an I-one district to allow outdoor storage. We did offer an alternative. We noted that the MX-three district would allow the use, however, all the storage would have to take place in a building. MX-three district, as you saw in that larger zoning map, there's property to the north, it's owned MX-three. The MX-three district would also not require an amendment to the future land use map. And as staff, we feel that it's a better mix or more appropriate designation for the area. This is the response map. Everybody within two hundred and fifty feet plus the neighborhood association were notified. This is an email. It's, one email is just a little bit long, but I flipped to the part, it's the correspondence from George Davis with the Southwestern Hills Neighborhood Association. I'll zoom in so you can read it and give you a second or two to look at it. We had three response cards. He said, I'm happy to answer your questions. Can go back to any of the graphics that showed.
Questions?
Yeah, of course. I, I saw the applicant's representative listed, so we'll get it turned over to Todd here in a little bit too.
Any questions for Jason? Okay, will the applicant state your name and address? I see the hand up.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, I'm Dave Cranes. I'm the owner at the building at twenty-one-ten Wakanda View Drive. After listening to Jason speak, there are some, I think, miscommunications about the outdoor storage. He indicated that the entire south end of the, pretty much the entire south third end of the property is going to be for material storage. That is not correct. Most of the pipes or anything that is gonna be stored outside will be covered with an awning and two sides. The only visible direction would be from the south to the north, because unfortunately, some of the materials that I do store, most of them, I would say I have inside. Ninety percent of the materials that I have are stored inside the warehouse building. Unfortunately, with the, with the trade that I'm in, I do deal with some pipes that are extremely heavy that need to be lifted with equipment and moved around with equipment. Concrete pipes, you know, big sewer pipes, eighteen inch, twenty-four inch, whatever. But I am gonna make, you know, the necessary adjustments, like doing a six-foot cedar privacy fence along the west side of the building, the south end of the building, and the east side of the building to connect to the pole bar or the, the metal warehouse. So, nothing back there will be visible from the surrounding areas. And all the neighbors, I've already discussed with them, they're, they're okay with that. Also, like I said, they will be placed on pipe racks and pretty much enclosed on both sides, the rear, with a roof over the top, you know, like a, kinda like an awning over the top of it. So there'll be, nobody will really be able to see, see those pipes. The other stuff, I do have equipment and trucks, vans, stuff like that. Sometimes the guys leave at my shop. I've got a couple trailers and some pickups that, that tow the trailers. Those would be parked there, which is why I would put the privacy fence up as well. So I mean, outdoor storage is, isn't really what's gonna be done. It will be outdoors, but it will be covered and concealed. It's not just gonna be laying out there like it would at like a, a plumbing supply place like municipal supply, where they have just pallets of pipe everywhere. It won't be like that. So I'm not sure if that makes a difference. I'm just, unfortunately, I've been in this building now for over fifteen years. The, the people before me, the underground owned it, before me, so for quite a few years, this, this place has been on a trade level as far as the, you know, what the building uses for. And I'm just trying to get my, you know, get a nice concrete parking lot, trying to clean the area. You know, I've talked to Greg, who's at Francis. He's very excited about it. The bowling alley's really excited about it. Larry Adair, who actually mows the yard here, you know, he's really excited. The associate, the president of the Southern Heroes Association actually reached out and called me and, you know, was really looking forward to everything getting cleaned up. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make it nice, but I just wanted to clarify that the pipe storage is not gonna be the entire third of the back of the lot.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Mr. Cranes?
Also, can I add something?
Oh, sure. Yes, go ahead.
Also, I think it's unfair that just because they don't feel it's I guess the word is, because there's nothing else around me like that, I don't know if that should actually determine whether or not this should be zoned I-one, if I'm making the accommodations to, you know, to store stuff in the proper manner. It just doesn't seem, you know, I, I, nobody is objective to it around the neighborhood. Everybody is in favor of doing it. The only people not in favor of doing it are the people downtown that don't even live around here. So, it just seems, you know, there's no other opinions, negative opinions of what I'm trying to do, except for them.
Okay, thank you. Questions of Mr. Cranes? From the commission.
Jan, this is Rocky. I have a question. Dave, how long have you been at this location?
Uh, I believe around sixteen years.
Thank you.
Okay.
Jan, I have a question. This is Abby.
Yeah, I think.
Is there a way, you said it's not going to take up the entire one-third of the southern side of the lot? Is there any way for you to indicate what portion of the lot it is going to take up?
Approximately, probably, probably, the thing I have now, it's probably gonna be about twelve foot deep. So from the south side of the building, pretty much twelve feet to the south, and then it'll probably be about twenty foot long. So I mean, it's a very small portion of where I, and like I said, the only pipes that I store outside are strictly pipes that are just too big, or really too long to fit into my shop, that I, I need equipment to get to that I can't lift it out of my shop and get it out. I gotta be able to get back there with equipment, like a skid loader or a backhoe, and pick that stuff up and load it onto a trailer. So, it's not a lot of pipes. And I don't like storing my stuff outside, but unfortunately, some of the stuff, I kinda have to, just for accessibility reasons. But like all my pipes, fittings, I mean, plastic and steel and copper, all that stuff, I have pipe racks inside the warehouse that I store all that stuff. This is just mainly for the bigger stuff. And I've never really had anything, a lot of pipe out there. I mean, I've, right now, currently have a semi-trailer, which I'm getting rid of. I've actually got and applied for a, and refinanced the building and have acquired almost a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that is going directly to improve the property. So, I'm building a place back there just to have the pipes that I have out there now, in place of the trailer. So it's more aesthetically pleasing, I guess, and, and a little more organized. Get stuff off the ground, stuff like that.
Okay. Any other questions from the commission?
Uh, Jan, this is Carolyn.
Yes, Carolyn.
So, so to be clear, so all of his neighbors, so he's been there sixteen years, and all of his neighbors are supporting this. Is that correct?
Yes, I haven't had one person, and I've talked to them. I mean, I've gone and talked to everybody that's directly around me, and everybody's in favor of it. Nobody has said, oh, I don't want you to do that, and it's actually gonna look better. I'm, I'm trying to clean it up. I'm, I'm refacing the building, rubber coating the dome, putting almost ten thousand square feet of concrete down, landscaping all the way around, privacy fence all the way around with a gate in the front, so to keep people from turning into my lot that think they're going to the bowling alley. And, you know, so there's, there's a lot that I wanna get done. And the only reason I'm going for the industrial one is just so I can, you know, have that material in the back legally and be able to conceal it as best I can and, and make it more organized, so it looks good for the neighborhood. I wanna clean, clean it up so it cleans up the neighborhood a little bit.
And Jason, the cards support that, right?
Yeah, the cards were all supportive.
Yes, that's, that is correct.
All right, thank you. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I have a follow-up. This is Johnny Alzivar. As far as the on-in goes, do you know at this point, like, more specifics about the material? If it's gonna cover the whole thing, is it gonna be partly covered? A little bit more that can help us with this decision?
Yeah, it will cover the entire thing. So you'll have the sides on the east and the west. And of course, it'll be backed up to the building, and then the overhang will completely cover everything, probably in a couple feet more. So it will be, like I said, the only visual you'll have is from the south facing the north, and I'll have a six-foot privacy fence, which most of it probably will not be any higher than the six feet, because like I said, it's pretty heavy stuff. So, you know, I'm gonna have the rack built. It'll be a steel rack that probably won't extend taller than six foot. And the roof will probably be, probably close to ten. And then it'll have like a drop face on it. So, I just gotta be able to get forks in there and be able to get a piece of pipe out. I don't wanna go up too high. And like I said, my goal is to keep everything pretty concealed, you know, so it's, you know, you, you don't really see it, but unfortunately, it will be there. And it's not a lot.
Okay.
Right how it fits underneath the semi-trailer that I have there, that I have stuff stored in, it fits underneath of that completely. So, it'll be the same distance out, except the building will be about, about twelve feet out. And I'm only gonna take up about eight.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, hearing none. Is there anyone else who wants to speak in favor of this proposal? Raise your hand or star nine. Okay, I'm not seeing any. Is there anyone who'd like to speak in opposition, or they have concerns about this, this item? Raise your hand or star nine. Okay, I'm not seeing any. Alright, well, it's time to close the public hearing. So we've, we've heard, you know, some good discussion here, and explanation. So, commission, time for discussion.
Madam Chair, this is Will Page here. I have a question for, for Jason, please. Jason, the alternate, as I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, please, the alternate that the city has suggested or recommended is MX-three. Is it correct that MX-three would disallow outdoor storage? Is that correct?
Yes, Will. This, this is Jason Van Ness with the planning staff. Yes, MX-three allows this type of a business use, but it doesn't allow the outdoors storage. And MX-three would be in conformance with the future land use plan.
Thank you for that. Then, another question, Jason. Industrial one, in addition to having the outdoor storage, what else would that include?
Pretty much any, I mean, any of the standard, you know, warehousing. Intensity of industrial services, general fabrication, equipment, material storage outdoors, warehousing, wholesaling.
Just kind of your other, everything but, you know, like your heaviest of industrial uses.
So if we did rezone it to industrial one, that would be, that would go with the property regardless of who Mr. Cranes' business on the site now, is that correct?
Yes, that's, that's correct.
I guess my other question is this. If the commission would seek to allow the outdoor storage, given what Mr. Cranes has expressed in terms of its design, is there some way that we could limit industrial one in such a way that would hinder or prohibit other uses on the property that we would probably not want to see in the future?
Yeah, Will, that's an excellent question. If, you know, if the commission is inclined to support something but has concerns about some of the, what, what we might be opening the site up to with future ownership and business models, we certainly could come up with a list of conditions that'd be very specific to the applicant's operation. If, you know, if the majority of the commission was interested in that, I would actually suggest that you continue the item to the next meeting and allow us time to work on that. And then also to get more information from the applicant on the, you know, like an email at least, or something in writing that describes what he shared with us tonight. You can see the drawing in front of you that the information about what's happening with outdoor storage and equipment was fairly general on what we've been provided. So I think there's an opportunity to fine-tune that based off of what he shared tonight.
Dan, this is Greg Jones. Carrying on with that discussion. Why couldn't we rezone it to MX-3 and just allow a twelve-by-twenty area for storage immediately behind the building with an awning? Rather than allowing it go clear industrial, why don't we open it up a little bit with the mixed use area and restrict it? Does that work, Jason?
That is an alternative that we could look at. I'm concerned, I don't know from a zoning perspective if we could call that some sort of building that the commission could give type relief to with the site plan? Or if that's something that would require zoning board adjustment relief as a use variance to allow outdoor storage, since there's zoning requests for I-1 was the.
Jason, this is Mike Ludwig, planning administrator. I think that that would be a use, some sort of a use variance from the board of adjustment, since outdoor storage is not allowed. So I think one option would be to rezone it to a limited I-1 zoning district and restrict the uses to those that are allowed in the MX-3 zoning district, plus outdoor storage as shown on the site plan or something of that respect. But I agree with Jason, it would be better to probably continue to allow us to write up those conditions specifically and specifically note how the outdoor storage will be enclosed on three sides by the applicant.
Thanks, Mike. Other, you know, other discussion, other points to consider? Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, this is Greg. Hopefully, the applicant would agree. I think the best thing is continue this. I also agree that there's a path here, and I'm so inclined to help the applicant out, but I'd rather staff work with them and figure out the best path. So I'd make a motion to continue.
Okay. We have a motion to continue. Tyler?
Johnny Alsobar?
Yes.
Emily Webb?
Yes.
Jan Fried?
Yes.
Kayla Burksen?
Yes.
Lisa Howard?
Yes.
Steve Wallace?
Yes.
Carolyn Jenison?
Yes.
Francis Bogus?
Yes.
Greg Watier?
Yes.
Greg Jones?
Yes.
Abby Chungus?
Yes.
Rocky Spazato?
Yes.
And Will Page?
Yes.
Motion carries thirteen zero.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, this is Eric Lundey.
Yes.
Mr. Cranes had raised his hand, but the hearing was closed, so he did not have any further opportunity to speak. But if he has questions, he can email staff.
Okay, thank you. I didn't, I didn't, thanks, Eric.
Madam Chair, this is Glenna Frank with the legal department. I just wanted to clarify that the meeting to which this item is being continued is the next P and Z meeting, which would be September seventeenth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes the public hearing. Do we have a director's report, Mike?
No report for this evening.
Report.
Everybody have a safe and healthy Labor Day weekend.
Okay. Everyone have a nice, long weekend. We're adjourned.
Thanks, Jan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jan. Good night.